It's that time of night at 6:30. And I'm going to call to order the school committee meeting of April 5th, 2021. And something that we have not been doing that we're supposed to have been doing is introducing ourselves that we're here as a school committee members. So, I'll ask you, Francie.
Francie Santino.
Bob Vaughn. David.
Molly Elliott.
Okay, and I. Melissa, you'll kind of keep scanning the list to see if any other committee members show up?
Yes, I just let in Anne Marie.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, there's a message on the Q and A from the president of the LEA indicating that some members say they need the password to get into the meeting. I was wondering if Amy Nowitzki could possibly send that to Mary so she could, so she can share it.
That's fine. I would have a hard time finding it myself with any speed.
I don't see Amy on the meeting.
We have, we have a lot of attendees from the.
I can read off the password. Would that be helpful? And then we could post it or something.
Yep, that would be fine.
I'm going to click over to the password. Okay, the password or passcode is 717655. So the passcode is 717655. Do they need the webinar ID as well?
I'll forward the email I received from Amy this afternoon to Mary.
Okay, so meetings called to order and I know the next item is the hearing of visitors. I know that Mary Cherry would like to make a statement.
Bob, I, Bob Munch texted that he has a work, he has a work crisis, so he's not going to be able to make it.
Okay.
Yeah, and Bob, can you see me?
I can.
You can, okay.
I can, yep. So I guess we need to promote Mary to speak, although I can't find her right now.
I'll find her.
Oh, there she is. Hang on. Promote to panelist. Okay, Mary, so you indicated you'd like to make a statement?
Yes, please. Thank you. Mr. Vaughn and members of the school committee. The executive board of the Lennox Education Association wishes to address the March 27th Berkshire Eagle article describing the compromise reach between the committee and the Finance Committee of Lennox. We are concerned about reported budget cuts as well as comments we find disparaging to our profession and our school system. Mr. Vaughn cites potential savings in reduced compensation for new hires. While it is reasonable to expect that new hires for the seven teaching and administrative positions being vacated by retirements may result in lower compensation packages. To handcuff the administration with a definitively mandated budget reduction for those hires puts our district in an unnecessary and potentially compromised position. Attracting and maintaining highly qualified candidates traditionally has been our common interest and a hallmark of our district. This new directive puts in jeopardy our ability to do that and is in stark contrast to how we have filled positions in the past. Certainly when this body was tasked with selecting a new superintendent, it did not appear that money was an obstacle. Additionally, we take issue with the contention by one member of the Finance Committee that, quote, "There is evidence that the quality of schools is not what it once was," end quote. It is our sincere hope that this committee will forcefully counter that statement by offering evidence that contradicts this assertion. We maintain that this statement is false and not supported by evidence, including but not limited to PSAT, SAT, ACT, and MCAS results, as well as numerous recognitions and commendations at the state and national level. Given that we will soon be entering into negotiations for a new contract, the LEA is particularly alarmed by the comment regarding the, quote, "Elephant in the room," end quote, that is purportedly the contract between the school committee and the LEA. Most disturbing is the statement that the school committee, quote, "Cannot continue to ignore the reality that the Lennox Education Association contract is the culprit, and they must begin to address this situation before it gets more out of hand." Members of the LPS School Committee and the LEA have duly negotiated our contract. In fact, as we prepare to head into negotiations in the fall, we hope that process will continue to be collaborative. If it is the school committee's opinion that you indeed need to ensure that we do not get out of hand, the LEA will not be in a position to continue interest-based bargaining and will be compelled to enter into more positional, traditional collective bargaining. Budgets are difficult. Working collaboratively with all members of a community is challenging. Pitting one part of the town against another by pointing accusatory fingers is divisive. Lennox deserves better.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, the school committee meeting minutes of March 22nd.
I'll make a motion to pass the meeting minutes of March 22nd.
Okay. Any comments? Hearing none. I'll call for roll call vote. Francis Santino.
Francie Santino, aye.
Molly Elliott.
Molly Elliott, aye.
Anne Marie O'Brien.
Anne Marie O'Brien, aye.
David Remmler.
David Remmler, aye.
And myself, Bob Vaughn. And I do want to note that Orrin Cass has asked to speak and I maybe had missed his, I might have missed his hand earlier, so I'm going to promote him to a panelist so he can speak. Are you there?
Is it all right for me to comment?
Yes, yes.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to speak for a minute. Just first of all, to acknowledge that it was wonderful to see younger students back in school full-time starting today, more than a year after they had initially been sent home. And, you know, I know that this committee and the administration have worked incredibly hard during what has been a a very challenging year to, to make the best of the circumstances. But, but I think in all the discussions we've had, I think there'd be agreement at this point that to some extent we've, we've been frequently behind the eight ball and, and wish that we had been able to do more planning earlier on to maybe have more options available to us. And, and so in that spirit, I just wanted to encourage at, at this moment, rather than sort of feeling mission accomplished, that, that we look ahead to September and by the start of the 21, 22 school year, I believe all adults will have had the option of becoming fully vaccinated. According to the CDC, for healthy children, the risk of complications is lower for COVID compared to the flu. And so while unforeseen challenges could always arise, it seems to me at least that, that we should have a, a clear goal of making September essentially back to normal. It, it may be that others feel differently, in which case, again, now is, is the time to discuss that. What is the goal? What is our expectations for what school can look like? And that I think will give everybody time, whether it's parents thinking about what they're comfortable for their kids, any bargaining that needs happening with the LEA, any policies the school committee might need to set. Now is the time to, to hash all of that out so that when we get to the summer and then into September, we have a plan that, that we really thought through and deliberated in advance and everyone was, was, whether everyone agreed, I'm sure that, that will not be the case, but at least everyone had been heard and, and the best possible decision be made. So, you know, certainly my view is that it, it should be practical and we should be planning toward regular schooling, regular spacing, regular recess. Everything that, that kids deserve and need and have now lost, lost a whole year of. I'm, I'm sure others will have other views, but, but I would ask the school committee to, to please really dig in and start working on that question as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Okay, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are five items on the superintendent's report and I will be as brief as I can be with each of them, but I'm not, I'm prepared to answer any questions or amplify anything I'm capable of amplifying in terms of the issues with each of them. I want to start with the Lennox Memorial Middle and High School Asbestos Remediation Program. I believe everyone at this point knows as much as I do about where things stand with this, this problem. We have received a new scope of work from EcoGenesis that aligns the completion of the project with the, with the tasks that the Juices Department of Labor has identified as needing to be addressed. And although I am quite disappointed to have had to tell the staff and families of LMHS that we are more likely than not to be closed through the following, I guess it's the following week until, until the April vacation takes place. The week the Patriots Day falls in. But we do expect to reopen the building to full-time in-person instruction during the week of April 26th. Some of the plans for doing that are being hashed out still, but, and I don't, I don't want to speak to them except to say that by the, the state's deadline of April 28th, we fully intend to be open for, certainly for the middle school and we hope for the high school as well. For students and, and families who want their children to return to work, to work, to school. I do want to comment just briefly on an issue that's come up a number of times in email questions and in meetings, which has to do with the retention of students in remote learning. I've been asked why, for example, with the elementary school, it's not possible for students to continue to do what some have done, which is to attend full-time, attend in-person sometimes and stay home and learn remotely other times without making a firm commitment to staying in one format or the other. When we shift from, as we've done today, actually, when we shifted to the full day in-person mode that we began this morning, we have required parents to identify whether their children are going to be remote or whether they're going to be in-person. The problem with kids jumping back and forth by day or by week to one model or the other is that it created enough difficulties for the classroom teachers juggling two formats for instruction. One directly dealing with students in front of them in person, the other dealing with students who were present remotely on a screen. And we're, we are doing our best to ensure that teachers who have students in school can focus on them in school and not have their attention distracted by kids who are learning remotely. And the kids who are learning remotely will receive the attention exclusively of dedicated teachers for that purpose. We need to stabilize the size of these groups and we need to ensure that the same teacher is responsible from one day to the next for the lessons that, that are being presented and for the students' learning, the assessment of student learning. And so it's, it's just not feasible for us to allow that kind of flexibility. With regard to students staying in remote instruction, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed is for reasons that the commissioner can certainly explain better than I, not requiring students who have been learning remotely to return to school. The option of staying out through the end of the school year remains, although to a point that I think Mr. Cass may have been alluding to, or that certainly is at least not irrelevant to what he said. There is no indication from DESE, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, that remote learning will be a feature of instruction next school year. So things change, circumstances change, maybe that will change too. But I have not seen any indication that the department is willing to go along any further with the maintenance of two separate ways to attend instruction. The, the work on the remediation, there is, there's a plan in place. I know that there is a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. We're going to go to a two meetings a week schedule with the contractors to try to make, to ensure that we're on the schedule that's spelled out in the scope of work. That meeting will be with, will be an onsite meeting at the school. There will then be a follow-up meeting on Thursday with the principals. That is, the owners of Gem Environment, Environmental Incorporated, which is doing the actual remediation work and EcoGenesis, which is doing the air quality testing and also has developed the scope of work. And I know that Mr. Vaughn has attended at least the first meeting, a large group meeting that we had with the Department of Labor Standards. I hope that he and Mr. Remmler has also expressed an interest in attending, and I think that would be most valuable to have school committee members, certainly not enough so that you'd have to post a meeting, but had to have school committee members present to, to pose questions and hear what we're being told. They, so that's where we stand at the moment. The remediation will probably not be complete in time for us to have to, to school, to hold school at LMHS prior to the April vacation. We can all keep our fingers crossed, but I'm not counting on that. And we do expect school to reopen in-person full-time at LMHS, not later than April 28th. With regard to the reopening of school at, at Morris, I was in touch today with Principal Kelly. As members of the committee know, I am not physically present in Massachusetts, but I was in touch with Principal Kelly. And she told me that although the initial stages of the students coming into school was, took a little bit longer than had been planned, that up to the time I spoke with, with her, which was about midday, things were going well and we'll have more information, which I'd be happy to share in terms of when the numbers have been confirmed about who is attending school in person and who is attending school remotely. I'll share that with the committee. But we expect, based on the responses that we got to parent surveys, that a large majority of the students will be back in school this week at, at Morris. The pooled testing information that we have, that has gone quite smoothly, I think. Of course, I'm not the one supervising it directly, but I know that Amy Noble Nowitzki, who is the administrative assistant to the, to the superintendent, has been quite deeply involved in trying to work out plans and keep records being, being maintained with the, with the contractor and student pooled records. But the long and the short of it is that we have now had three weeks of tests, starting on March 17th, followed by March 24th. March, the March 24th, the Morris numbers had gone from 158 to 170. We also, on the 24th, had seven students who were football players who formed, constituted their own pool. And on the 31st of March, we had gone from 158 to 170 to 183 total tested at Morris, of whom 133 were students, 50 were staff members. And on the first of April, we had a total of 130 student, 130 individuals, 123 of them students, seven of them staff members associated with the resumption of athletics at school. We have had no positive pool since the start of this, which in, particularly in light of what's going on, say in Pittsfield, which is having a difficult time of it right now. I'm very impressed by that. I think a good deal of that has to do with the caution that people have with sending their, or excuse me, with not sending their children to school or their, the students in their household to school, if there's the slightest indication that they are not well. And I think that the, the fact that we have had zero flu year speaks to the seriousness with which the school administration, the teachers and the students themselves and their families have taken adhering to the precautions keeping people safe from contracting virus. Can you hear me?
You're freezing up periodically, just in the last minute.
Okay, it says my service is unstable. Fortunately, I'm almost done with my report. If you can still hear me.
We're good.
The registration that has already taken place with regard to pre-K, we have eight students likely returning, 25 new students to be screened. We anticipate having two classes of 12 students each for a total of 24. The screening will take place on April 5th and 6th. That is, took place today, will, will continue tomorrow. For kindergarten, we anticipate having 20 resident students. We have nine choice siblings joining kindergarten. And we have 23 non-sibling choice applicants. And so I don't, I'm not, I can't recall. If Amy is here, maybe she can jump in. I don't remember whether all of the applicants were accepted for kindergarten.
We'll accept a total of 18, so the nine choice siblings and nine additional out of the, the rest of the pool.
And screening for kindergarten will take place on the 7th and 8th this week, Mr. Chairman. And the final matter on the agenda for, for my report has to do with a, a motion for the Special Education Stabilization Fund. It's my understanding, which I think the chair can confirm, that that vote need not be taken because the fund is currently fully funded. And so there doesn't need to be any request for supplementation of the fund.
Yeah, I'll just follow up on that. The, when the law passed such that we could create the stabilization fund, we committed, I think, $100,000 the first year and then $50,000 each year for the next two or three. We were capped at a very, at a certain number and we've reached that cap. You know, you couldn't go any higher unless you actually used money from the stabilization account to, to fund unexpected special needs requirements. And, and so we're at the cap right now. So while, while we didn't, we didn't know that precisely when we planned the meeting. We do know it now, so there's no need to ask for more money. So you're, you're all set, Dr. Cameron?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. I note that Principal Brenda Kelly is present and I don't want to put her on the spot, but she can probably give a more informed report on the first day at Morris than I can, if the chair would like to ask her to speak.
Yes, I promoted her to a panelist in case, in case she did want to speak. But you're under no obligation to, to Principal Kelly.
Okay, no, we had a fantastic first full day back to school. It was nice to have all the students in the building. Thank you to all the parents who were very patient this morning as all the students arrived. Lunch went smoothly. The students ate their lunch, went outside for recess. We, we followed all our health and safety protocols and we had a very excellent first day back, full-time.
How are the structures coming that are being built by the Allegroni?
They're coming along. Yep, there, there was a community build for the seating and the tables on Friday and Saturday. Few more touch-ups need to happen and then they should be ready for us to use.
Great, great. And I would like to thank all the people who have worked to make that happen.
Yes, yes. I mean, the time, it was in one week. It is amazing. So I'm grateful.
Yeah, that's great. And that'll be something that'll be there for permanently. So, yeah, that's great. Okay, thank you.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Cameron. Okay, I would like to, you know, just quickly address the comments that Mary Cherry made before we move on to the public hearing. Continuation of the public hearing. You know, we have always been very proud of the work that our educators are doing and the results that they've been getting. I don't know the, you know, why the, the comments were made during the Finance Committee meeting about the quality of schools declining. Obviously, anything we do in education is a continual work to try to, to improve, which we're, which we are doing. And I don't know, you know, I've looked at the numbers. I have, you know, access, as anybody in the public does, to the numbers for all the schools in the county and we're still at the top of the schools in the county. Our, our numbers as high as they've been at any given year, they go up and down. I don't know precisely where they are right now. We didn't have any MCAS testing last year. So, you know, there's some, you know, some changes that way, but I continue to be proud of not only the entire faculty and staff who work with our students, but also the the student body itself works hard and the support we get from parents has been outstanding. So I, I'd just like to say that to Mary Cherry as the LEA president, as well as anybody else who's on here from the, the schools that, you know, we continue to be proud. We, we don't want to, you know, we're not standing still. We know you're not standing still. We know it's been a difficult year and you've risen to the occasion. And, you know, we continue to expect to be offering outstanding education to the students. So, and so thank you. Okay, so now moving on to the, to the budget hearing, you will recall that two weeks ago, we started the budget hearing. We had had a meeting that day with the, some of us had a meeting with the town manager and the chairman of the selectmen. We also had coming up later that week, the, a meeting with the Finance Committee itself, the full finance committee. And, you know, we made the commitment to meet the 3% number that the town manager had requested that we, that we try to get to. And, you know, so I'm going to ask Melissa to make the presentation of our budget summary and then we will at some point during the meeting need, I think you all have the proposed motion sheet. I realize it's a complicated thing to read, but I will need somebody to read that and make the motion at some point during the meeting after we've had the budget presentation and after we've had any further discussion about the budget that we may wish to. So go ahead, Ms. Walkowski.
Are you seeing the slide?
Are you seeing the slideshow?
Yes, we are. I am.
Okay, good. So a few weeks ago, we brought forth a recommended budget that totaled 13093, 744, exclusive of benefits, adding the benefits in the receipts, and our net operating and benefits budget total came to $14,444,549, or a 4.7% increase over last year's numbers. And this is where we were two weeks ago. So after meeting with the Finance Committee and the representatives of the School Committee at that meeting, the goal was to achieve an increase of not more than 3% of the FY 2021 approved operating budget of 13,785,162. A 3% increase equals an operating budget of $14,198,717 for the fiscal year 2022 year. So our methodology to get to that number was to decrease other program expenses by 10%. This would include contracted services where we could, equipment, postage, things of that nature, a decrease of 10% where we could. We eliminated field trip funding for fiscal year 2022. We decreased the textbook funding that remained in the budget at 250% of the level it was at two weeks ago. We reduced new hire salaries, and that judgment has been left up to the principals as to what number they could bring in the new hires at. And all of this was worked in conjunction with the principals. And we're going to utilize available grant funding to offset any allowable expenditures in this budget. The grant funding would primarily be the ESER grant that is only available for a few years. We do have some funding this year that we will be able to use until 2023, and then hopefully we'll receive an additional grant that we'll be able to use through 2024. After those years, however, we won't have any offset to reduce the budget in those grants. They'll be gone. So the program reduction totals are as follows. The other expenses, supplies, travel, PD, equipment, and postage were reduced by $58,762. Field trip funding by $33,880. Textbooks by $25,025. Adjustment of new hire salary levels, $35,920. We reduced a small portion of the substitute custodial funding of $700, and an adjustment of other student activity and coaching stipends, $35,453. Now, that line item was reduced in line with historical expenditures. As I noted previously, I did budget as to every position available in the contract. This is based upon historical expenditures over the years with an increase in, a slight increase in the level of funding. The budget will be offset by revenue. These revenue numbers remain the same. School choice receipts at 1710, non-choice, which are tuition in students and pre-case tuition in students of 60,000, pre-K tuition of 30,000, Circuit Breaker, which is the special ed reimbursement account of $11,195. The presentation that was sent to you earlier, or late last week, had $11,165. That was a typo. The number is $11,195. Athletic receipts of $5,000 and other of $169,162, which is showing the increase of the pandemic relief grant, ESER II, of $136,192. It's inclusive of that. So the total special revenue to meet this number has increased, which will offset the gross budget to $19,85387. So that brings us to the FY 21, 2021 approved budget. It's the first column. Two weeks ago, the March proposed budget is the middle column, the second column in FY 2022, April, recommended budget. These are the levels by program area with the benefits and the new added receipts to offset bringing, which brings the total of the operating and benefits budget for fiscal year 2022, the recommended budget to $14,198,717, which is a decrease from the budget presented a few weeks ago of $245,832, and is a 3% increase over FY 21's approved budget.
Could you go back for a second to the receipts page?
Yes. Are you still seeing my screen?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I just need to make some adjustments in the proposed motion because we still have the number 1909195. So I just want to see where I need to, you know, where I need to add any additional money. It looks like, well, I'm not sure.
No, there was a second motion that was sent out this afternoon that had the correct
Oh, okay.
Number of 1985387. I can read it to you if you'd like.
No, no, that's fine. As long as a school committee member has that motion, another school committee member has that motion to make.
I do.
I forgot to print it, so.
And I have that motion in front of me.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Melissa. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that is the summary of where the budget is right now, the recommended budget for fiscal year 22. I can answer, try to answer any questions anyone may have.
I guess I wanted to comment because I was part of the group that communicated the concern over the increase, and I really appreciate the efforts Melissa and Bill to bring it in line so that the town can kind of have full confidence and faith in approving this budget. I was kind of all year have been working, communicating with members of the Town Finance Committee and aware of the challenges that the town has faced due to the pandemic. And so in, I think that I really appreciate the responsiveness, the use of the additional ESER funds this year, and I hear the importance to be mindful that, you know, the ESER grant covers through 2023. And then hopefully there will be a second one through 2024, but that the town and committee needs to be mindful that that will not always be available two years from now. But I think I think I appreciate this effort. I think it is done in good faith and with a picture of really supporting our excellent schools, which I also want to echo that they are very, I believe that the School Committee and also as a parent, that we feel very grateful and for the quality. And I believe this budget will help maintain the quality as well as keep town support for this budget and future ones. So thank you.
Yeah, and I want to mention that a couple of things. You know, one is that I, you know, I feel that in making these cuts, when we met a week ago, I mentioned that we were able to look and identify maybe $80,000 that we could cut. And that essentially was looking at the other student activities account and budgeting it rather than for every position, if it were filled for kind of the historic, the historic stuff. And I also just wanted to mention, this is also in response to Mary Cherry's comments at the beginning of the meeting, that, you know, while it's phrased here that we're, you know, cutting the, you know, the money for new hires, we always budget, we always plan a decent number, you know, in there and give the flexibility to the principals to do the hiring. And I don't think that we've, I don't think we've, by reducing this account, I do not believe we have hamstrung our administrators in any way. I still believe that new hires will be the best candidates available, and that is a longstanding, you know, is in this current strategic plan. You know, one of the goals was to be the employer of choice. We wanted to get the best folks in the county or, you know, best people who applied to fill the positions, and we continue to believe that that's important to maintain, you know, our standing. But I also want to applaud Melissa and Bill for, and the administrators for working these numbers to get to 3%. I actually was not thinking terribly optimistically that we could get to 3. I was thinking maybe we could get to 3.5. But they, you know, they did a lot of work to get this done, and I'm grateful for that. I also had, a week ago Sunday, I had a call from Neil Maximilian, the Chairman of the Select Board, and he had read the online article that was going to appear in either Monday's paper or Tuesday's paper. I'm not sure when, and he knew that we were going to reach this number, and he was very grateful that we were doing that. And he wanted, you know, I don't know if he spoke to anybody else, but I didn't want to pass that on because he felt that at this particular time, given this situation the town has been in, that it was a responsible decision on our part. So. But I'll open it up for comments from any other members. And Melissa, unless somebody wants to comment about a specific page, I guess you can leave it up to see if anybody wants to comment on any specific page of the of your presentation.
Yeah, Bob, I'd like to make a comment. Perhaps, actually, I have two comments. I have a specific comment regarding one of the line items, and then perhaps a broader philosophical comment about how we approach the budgeting in general. And maybe I'll do that first because that's more of a comment and statement on my part, and the second one is more of a question. I sort of feel that we want to make sure as a committee and giving direction to our to the administration that we are clear in goals. I feel that during some of our hearing, committee hearings, when respective educators have brought up the contention or the comment that they are trying to work towards a town budget of 3% increase, it's not unusual for members of this committee to say, hey, you know, education is the most important thing. Don't worry about the number, you know, make sure you get what you get. You get what you need within fiduciary responsibility. I, for one, hate to backtrack on budgets like these. And I feel, I just would like to make the comment that if our, if the committee's perspective on this is to give us the budget that you feel you need in a responsible way, and then we go back and say, no, hey, actually, you need to be 3% above last year's budget, then I feel that we should leave some of these, make sure that we don't have these instances again at the 11th hour, where we then have to go back and adjust. I think that a more robust, better thought-out distribution of the money available would be best thought out during the initial process and not going back and doing a scramble at the end. And I also think it kind of goes to credibility in general. That said, I am the one, the one item I am curious about is the, what does it mean to reduce textbooks by $50,000 in a given budget? How do we do that?
We reduced textbooks by by 50% of the requested budget. So the way that we're doing that is there was a portion of the ESER II grant that does allow for enrichment and things such as textbooks in the grant. I had already written in money for textbooks in the grant, and what I will do is amend that grant and rewrite it to include what we've lost in this, in this reduction. So the total was about $50,000 in textbooks, remaining in the FY 22 operating budget. We reduced that down to 25. I will amend the ESER grant to include what's necessary for textbooks for the coming year. We are lucky, very, that's probably not the correct word, but that this funding is made, has been made available to us. This would not have been as easily completed without that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
And I just want to say, it wasn't easy. But we wouldn't have had that to fall back on to if we have the needs to make the departments whole with what they've requested.
Any other comments from committee members? Okay, I'm going to ask then for a motion to approve our operating budget. And I guess Molly, were you going to read that?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Bob, do I read one part at a time or all parts?
Well, one part at a time, but all parts, total.
We don't pause in between to accept the motion. Is that because it's one motion but with three parts?
Right, right.
So I propose the following motion to approve a gross operating budget in the amount of $12,924,104 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending on June 30th, 2022. I propose Part Two to approve the application of $1,985,387 in revenue toward the reduction of the fiscal year 2021 gross budget from the following sources. One, school choice receipts of $1,710,000. Two, non-choice tuition receipts of $60,000. Three, theater receipts of $15,000. Four, preschool receipts of $30,000. Five, special education circuit breaker receipts of $11,195. Six, athletic receipts of $5,000. Seven, building use receipts of $12,000. Eight, professional development receipts of $6,000. And nine, CVRF federal grant offset of $1,036,192.
Read that last number again, Molly.
It's the CVRF federal grant offset of $136,192.
Okay, thank you.
And Part Three, to see if the town of Lenox will vote to raise and appropriate the net sum of $10,938,717 for the school department's fiscal year 2021 operating budget.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. That should be the F Y twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Yes, that I was trying to unmute myself. Yes, I'm sorry. F Y twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Okay. In that part three, it's the last clause is fiscal year twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on the motion. Francie Sorrentino?
Francie Sorrentino, nay.
Molly Elliott?
Molly Elliott, aye.
Emery O'Brien?
Emery O'Brien, aye.
David Rimmler?
David Rimmler, aye.
Bob Vaughn, aye. So it passes. Okay, thank you very much. And I wanted to before we adjourn, I I wanted to let you know the kind of the timetable for the strategic plan. I'm going to send it out. It's, I'm going to ask Amy, I'm going to send her a PDF version of the plan. It's finalized by the it's been finalized by the strategic planning committee. And I'm going to have Amy posted on the website so that anybody can see it. There's going to be a public presentation on April twenty-ninth, but prior to that, we have our April twenty-sixth school committee where I'm going to ask for a vote of the school committee to approve the strategic plan for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six. And I also, so I will be sending that out to all members, the final version in a PDF form. You've already had a draft version to comment on. And and there are some changes, not dramatic changes, but there are some changes. And I also want to thank the members of the of the strategic planning committee because we've been working for two years, almost two years on this since June of two thousand nineteen. Robert Fuster, Erica Beluk Shepherdson, Kim Davis, and Orin Cass, who are parents. Veronica Fenton, David Fisher, Gigi Oblonsky, and Tom Romeo, who are community members. Peter Starenko, Ben Weaver, and Mike Jackson from the faculty and from the school committee, Christine Morrow, Molly Elliott, and myself. And I would, there's been a lot of work has gone into the writing of this, and I just want to commend them and thank them for all their work and we and the end. All of the members will be part of the presentation to the public on April twenty-ninth, which will be a Zoom presentation. We need to work out some of the details of the format and and all that, but we will have that public presentation for anybody who wishes to on the twenty-ninth of April. And I think it's going to be at seven o'clock, I believe, we decided. Isn't that right?
That's, yes, yep.
Okay.
Bob, just one, before we ask for a motion, I just want to make one comment when it's appropriate.
Right now is good.
Okay, I just wanted to pick up a little bit on what Mr. Cass said. Perhaps something to think about in parallel for planning. Aside from the physical structure and the and and our, everyone's desire to get all kids back in a quote unquote, normal atmosphere, there has been a lot of discussion over this past year about law, a deficit loss in you know, educate the, I'm sorry. There's been a significant, there's been a lot of discussion about the detrimental effect that this school year has had on the learning atmos of in the learning of our of our students. There's been discussion about increased deficits across the board. And and I just wanted to make the comment that that goes along with his, and it's a comment about planning. And I I I think that as this year closes, it would perhaps be beneficial for for us to look at or have an indication of the deficits that our students that that the teachers, educators feel that our students are experiencing or have experienced so that when we pick up in September next year, on an informal basis, we're able to identify those students which perhaps need more help. I I know formal testing, I believe, doesn't occur until somewhere into the perhaps a few weeks in in, and I don't know the dates exactly. But I'd hate for that to be lost time. I I think educators know those students who who are where they should be quote unquote. I think they have an indication of those who have struggled. And and it would be, I I think it would, it would be really beneficial for to those students if there was a discussion of of being able to hit the ground running, so to speak, to get people up as as quickly as possible. Granted, with recognizing that there's no formal measure, but there's just some sort of gut instinct about where our where our where our focus and on whom and what groups our focus should be.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Dave. You know, I agree that it's going to be important for the current teachers to identify for the next year's teachers, those students who whom they felt struggled. And, you know, the formative assessments that are done, you know, daily by teachers going from now through June should help you know, identify. And the teachers, I'm sure undoubtedly know already which kids have have been struggling. And and also which kids have been have been fine. And so I think that it would be great for a mechanism with our principals and faculty to be able to discuss the students particularly for whom they feel special attention may be needed to to bring them back up to speed. So, thank you. Anything else? Okay, I guess I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Bob, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Me second the motion.
Second, thank you. Nondebatable. Francie Sorrentino?
Francie Sorrentino, aye.
Molly Elliott?
Molly Elliott, aye.
Emery O'Brien? You're okay, Emery?
Yeah, can you hear me? Emery O'Brien, aye.
David Rimmler?
David Rimmler, aye.
And Bob Vaughn, aye. Thank you.